Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting. To be held at 4:30 on Monday, June 25, 2017, at Friendswood City Hall. Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Regarding the items of business, according to the agenda list to below. Call the meeting to order. We're going to have an invocation by Pastor Ralph Horbrass, Hope Lutheran Church. And then please stay standing and we'll do honor the Texas flag and U.S. Pledge of Allegiance.
Turn your phones off. I thought I turned it off. I turned it on.
Can I ask for forgiveness? All right, there you go. Please join me in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, grace, mercy, peace, and wisdom are gifts that we so diligently seek out, and it is from your open hand that you shower them down upon us. We ask your blessing upon our city council this evening. They're a gift that you've given us to live in an orderly and just society, and for that we rejoice as well. Father, we get together as free people, and we thank you for those who have sacrificed their lives so that we may do it. We also ask your blessing upon those who protect us on a daily basis. Father, as we go about our business, remind us always that this place that we live in is a gift from you. May we use it well. In the name of your son we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Move on to item four, communication from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Katina? I got two cards, and then I just want to make sure you're ready. Do you have a card? Any other cards? Please pass. Yeah, if you'd just hand them to Melinda. Thank you. First person is Katie White, followed by Jane Gibson. If you'd step to the microphone and just give us your name, you don't have to give us your address.
Hi.
Hey, and just so you know, not to be rude, but when you have one minute left, I'll put this up.
Okay. I don't think I'll take the whole time. My name is Katie White, and I'm a resident of Timberfield Estates. My husband and I are longtime residents of Friendswood and bought this house a year ago. We bought it because of the beauty of the house, the neighborhood, and the surrounding community. I like the way it is, and I don't want it to change. I grew up in Katy, Texas, and when my parents bought the house, it was in a very rural area. Throughout the years, businesses came in and the community grew. At first, we were thrilled about the growth of our new community, but as years passed, the restaurants and stores that we were so excited about struggled, changed, and closed down. They were replaced by new businesses, each less kept up and less desirable than the one before. As soon as all of my siblings graduated from high school, my parents sold and moved away from the city that they called home for 30 years. Many of our friends did, too. Since then, the changes to that area have continued in the same direction. On a recent trip across town, the neighborhood and community that I grew up in and once loved was completely unrecognizable, not a place at all that I would want to live anymore. I don't want that to happen to Friendswood, not in my bedroom community, not in my best city to live, not in my best city to raise a family, not in my best city for retirement. Please do not bring the possibility of faltering businesses, added traffic, and devaluing of our properties by rezoning the 104 Whispering Pines properties for commercial. Thank you.
Jane Gibson, followed by Bill Radisson.
Thank you. My name is Jane Gibson, and I'm also a resident of Timberfield. The property at 104 Whispering Pines, near the corner of 518, you're all familiar that it is currently zoned as residential with the exception for church, and you're going to be considering voting on changing it to commercial. And we have reason to believe that if this passes, the next property that still has a house on it and is residential will also be applying to change to commercial. Those of us who've lived in Timberfield, which is the Arbery and Verdun Lanes, for decades made major investments in our homes in a residential area. Whispering Pines was a nice little road that came from across the creek, didn't go any further than about Black Hawk. It was a beautiful place, and we invested in residential area. We recently lost the beautiful facade to our neighborhood, which you all know about, but we've worked diligently to keep our small neighborhood atmosphere in our homes, our private park, and our streets, and asset to this community, and we think we've done that. I've also been told at City Hall that the current emphasis on development for this downtown district is food establishments. Certainly, that would be a possibility for any commercial site, but no matter what type of establishment buys in, we who live literally feet from these properties already face heavy traffic increased by the expansion of Whispering Pines/Friendswood Link. We take our lives in our hands trying to get in and out of our neighborhood from either direction. Cars coming from 518, from either direction on 518, speed around that turn, trying to make the light onto Whispering Pines without ever hitting their brakes, onto a few feet of four lanes, then it swedges down to three, and then to two lanes at the bridge within a few hundred feet. Cars coming from across that bridge, back up at the light at 518, all the way past both our street entrances. You guys may not be aware of that, but come at peak times. Thanks for that already. Commercial development of these properties will only increase the traffic and our nightmare exponentially. Those who don't live in Timberfield but frequent Whispering Pines should also be concerned about safety on that road. Please support us in our efforts to stop this rezoning of properties. If you feel it necessary to keep adding commercial property where there once was residential, please do so in your own front yards, not in ours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, council, city staff, thank you for allowing me to have a few words here. Ms. Fisher, I would like to ask that you keep in mind, when you give legal guidance to the city leaders, that you keep the taxpayers in mind, too. In the past, we've had some bad legal advice that have cost the taxpayers a lot of money, and there are a lot of people that are not happy with that. And just, I would ask that you give them good guidance and keep everyone in your guidance, keep everyone's benefit there. Thank you.
Thank you. Katina?
Item five.
The yellow card means you have a minute.
I'll remember that. I'll try to keep, try to stick to it.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, and citizens. We're here to discuss the city's multi-year financial plan for the years, fiscal years 2018 through 2022. It's a challenge to say or even think that far out. We'll begin with the work session goals, and we are looking today to provide an overview of the city's multi-year financial plan. As a reminder, the plan focuses on the general fund and the debt service funds only. The city's utility funds, special revenue funds, and will be developed during the budget process, so they're not included in the multi-year financial plan. We'll also look at some key assumptions and the planning factors that go into the multi-year financial plan, and it's our hope that this session will generate some dialogue between council and staff and allow you to give us input on, to input and work with us on continuing the city's existing service levels. The scope of detail, the multi-year financial plan looks at the revenue projections and the expenditure projections, as well as the decision packages that will impact or are carried out through the five-year window of the multi-year financial plan. Keeping in mind that fiscal year 2018, our upcoming budget year, is projected in the fiscal year, or in the multi-year financial plan. It's year one of the plan. We also look at the impacts of these projections on the city's fund balance. In our planning assumptions, we look at the key revenues. In the plan, we have modest growth in the tax base throughout the plan, meaning the five-year window. Other revenue sources such as, and most of our revenue actually comes from property taxes and sales taxes. Other revenue sources in the plan are fines, court fines, fees, and those type of revenue sources, and those are increased by about 2% in the plan. Yes, Mr. Rocky?
Do you want us to wait until the end, or can we ask questions as you go along?
I would welcome the questions as we go along.
I have a question on how you, how you came up with modest growth in the tax base, because almost everybody out there gets these appraisals, and they are not modest. They are, they are gigantic in some cases, and so I, I don't know, maybe it's just the semantics of the word, but I, I feel like we're in a revenue increase just because of the property values, and I just would like to know why you, how you ended up with a projection that says it's only going to be modest.
Well, in our plan, we are looking at roughly 3%. We actually just received preliminary values and, from Harris County. We had them from Galveston County. They are trending about 6.3% to 7% increase from, from the previous year. Keeping in mind that these are very preliminary numbers at this point, they don't take into consideration the exemptions that are offered as well. So in the plan, we look at the exemptions, the property tax exemptions, and we'll get to that in a later, on one of the later slides. Our exemptions, total, or all of the exemptions that are allowed last year were almost 800,000. So we take that into consideration, and so that lends to our 3.8, 3.8 to 5% increase.
Let me see if I understand. You're saying that exemption amount is going up?
The exemption amount goes up.
We've got more people locking their taxes, turning 65.
Not necessarily that. Not just that, but we also have the homestead exemption of 20%, and so there are other exemptions as well, but they are growing each year.
And that Katina mentioned, and just slip of the tongue, it's actually $800 million.
$800 million, yes.
Yeah, $792.
That are exempted.
Yeah.
Nearly, nearly a billion dollars.
Yes. Thank you, Roger.
Councilmember Gusterson.
But where are you, I guess, where are you coming up with the, the modest growth in the tax rate? Okay, that's just on the valuation.
Yes, sir.
Understanding that I can almost say with certainty that you wouldn't get all that, because, well, we may not go with an effective tax rate. We may, it's going to be something less than.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So are you, are you figuring, and maybe we're just not to that point yet, but are you figuring on a, some percentage in, in growth from the property taxes, just to cover salary increases and that sort of thing?
Yes, sir. Not just from property taxes. We look at all of the revenue sources to the city. So in the plan, we have growth in the other revenue sources as well. Some of those are based on population estimates in, in the growth.
Are you going to be getting into the, the tax rates later on, or are we just way early in the process?
We're, we're really early in the process to look at tax rate, but the plan does, we do take into consideration the values on the properties when we're estimating our revenues.
Councilman, councilperson Branson.
Is there also a comparison on, I think we've had a, like I say, a large, maybe a modest reduction in the amount of property that's gone off our tax rolls due to nonprofit status that maybe previously was not in the nonprofit status? Has that a year-to-year trend there from like 15 to 16 to 17? Will we have that later on?
We actually, in, in the plan, it takes into consideration any exemptions. We try to estimate the homestead exemptions as well as the exemptions that are for governmental or nonprofit organizations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let the record show that these three minutes have not been Katina's three minutes.
I got the part. We're getting close.
Next slide, please. All right, in our revenue planning, we take a look and actually work with our economic development staff, as well as our community development staff, looking at the new, our potential new residential and commercial growth year over year in the plan. We also take into consideration current trends, as we're seeing those as far as home starts, and, and that type of information is, is factored into the multi-year financial plan. We try to identify our tax base through that method. On the financial side, and us, those of us in administrative services, each year we look at the city's financial policies. We look at revenue forecasting as we go into our budget development process. We get into those numbers a lot more and try to tie those down a little bit more as we go into the budget development. As far as departmental input, we look at fee adjustments, any new fees that departments feel are necessary for the services that are provided. We take a look at that, and we also look, in the plan, we have the ability to look at and take into consideration alternative revenue sources. As I mentioned earlier, year one of the multi-year financial plan is the, the basis for the city's upcoming, the city's upcoming budget. As you'll see, the general fund revenue in the plan for, for fiscal year 2018 is a little over $27 million. This is up about $941,000 over what we have in our adopted budget for 2017. As you can see on the slide, about 60% of the city's general fund revenue, it comes from property taxes. We're estimating this to be in the general fund, about 16 million for this next year, and we also have about 20% of the general fund revenue comes from sales tax, and the footnote there to the slide explains that in the general fund, it is just the, the sales tax that is for general operations. The additional half-cent sales tax that was adopted last year is recorded and expended in a different, in different funds for street maintenance and for economic, downtown economic development.
So that's one and a half percent, and there's an additional half, half a percent.
Additional half cent, but, yes, that's in two other, split between two other funds based on the breakdown of the additional sales tax. About 6% of the general fund's revenue is franchise taxes. This comes from utilities that operate within the city, electricity, natural gas, cable services. Our non-tax revenues make up about 15% of the general fund's revenue, and these include things like our fines or, or revenue sources like fines and building permits, parks and revenue, or parks and recreation fees, as well as intergovernmental revenues, such as grants or interlocal agreements between the city and other entities. Here we get into a bit about our property tax revenue component of the plan. Our gross appraised value, it approximates the market that's out there for residential properties and commercial properties. There is a 10% limit on the appraised value increases from year to year. This cap is set by, by regulations from the Comptroller's Office. As you'll see there, our taxable value equals the appraised value less the exemptions. As I mentioned, and thank you, Roger, again for the correction, as of this tax year, 2017, we're estimating the exemptions to be around $800 million. And those trend upward each year in the plan. We try to estimate what that would be. We're expecting by 2022, year five of the plan, that these exemptions could total closer to a billion dollars, a little over 900 million.
What is the major component of that?
Residential.
So it's the people turning 65?
No, it's homestead exemptions, the 20% that's allowed by the city.
20% there, so that, so after they live here a year, they do the homestead exemption? We have that?
I don't know that it's, that it's a year. It, I think it's immediate.
It's what?
I think it's immediate. I think you can, a resident could apply for it immediately. They don't have to stay a year.
Yeah, but you have to be in the proper calendar year.
The house has to be completed, yes, and, and occupied, I believe.
I guess every time it's sold, they wait a year, so the transaction part of it, but I just can't believe that that's a, a growing factor out of what makes it up.
As each home is, is built, the residents can, the new homes can apply for the exemption.
Correct.
And I believe, if I have that number.
Katina, what we might do is, is prepare a little graph or chart of the exemptions and show the growth over the past three, four years.
Yes. We can definitely do that.
Now, I mean, to help answer this, I think, as, as property values continue to rise in Friendswood, as they have, that 20% is going to get bigger and bigger and bigger.
Yes.
So that's, it's not so much that we're getting new homes coming in. It's more the growth of the value of the property.
That's a contributing factor, yes.
Right, okay. I would think that's probably the biggest factor.
And as it grows, you're right. As the values increase, it's 20% of that value of.
Right, right. So whereas 20% of that value may have been half a billion dollars a few years back, now it's, you know, 800 or a million or whatever.
Yeah, but as that 20% grows, so does that 80%. So it's all relative.
Yeah. That's why I'd like to see what makes up that.
And anybody that's not taking advantage of the, you know, 20% exemption, then, I mean, they just don't, they haven't been told. But, yeah, it's all growing at the same rate, so we can talk about it all we want. It should be factored into the budget whenever we start. I would, I would just congratulate you all and thank you for being gracious to our citizens, quite frankly, because not every cit, not every citizen, city does this.
This is true.
You are giving almost, in every case, the maximum amount of exemptions that there are available.
Well, we're just all looking to be 30, or 65 as well, you know.
We're not all looking to be 65. Some of us see it from the rear. A couple of [bleep] on me real quick.
Sorry, Katina, I didn't mean to.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's quite all right. Our tax levy is equal to the taxable value, which is the appraised value less the exemptions times our tax rate that's adopted. And our tax revenue is the levy times our collection rate, and I will say that our collection rate is, I've been told by our delinquent property tax collection, that the city of Friendswood has one of the highest collection rates of any city in the area. We're well over 99% on our collection rate. The tax rate does have two parts. It's the debt service. We always look at that first to make sure that our debt service obligations are paid out of the property tax revenue, and then the remaining portion of the property tax rate goes towards maintenance and operations of the city's general fund. Again, our, the first portion of our, or the tax rate, the portion of the tax rate that we look at first is our debt service. It is levy to meet the obligations of the city, the principal and interest payments on general obligation debt and capital leases that the city has outstanding. And the plan also reflects the debt service rate that's projected to meet the existing debt, and we don't have any new debt, general obligation debt included in the plan at this time. We did finish the $24 million general obligation issuance. The third round was issued earlier in 2017, so we don't have any new general obligation debt included in the plan as of right now. Our tax rate drivers, property tax revenue in the plan is based on an effective tax rate. That's what we look at, that's what we work toward maintaining, and this, it maintains the debt service rate that allows for debt capacity, and it also provides maintenance and operations for the city to maintain our current service levels. The effective tax rate generates roughly the same amount of revenue year over year on the properties that are levied or taxed in, in one year to the next. Revenue growth from revaluations and new construction is factored into the plan. Yes?
What do you mean by the second bullet under the first bullet? Operations, maintenance, tax rate will not maintain current service level?
It will not maintain current service levels throughout the five years of the plan, in the out years, and you'll see that on a future.
You're talking about the five years?
Yes, throughout the five years. Thank you.
But, but real quickly, that's assuming the effective tax rate year on year, right?
That is assuming the effective tax rate.
Which would mean there would be no growth in revenue to the government over the next five years. It would stay status quo.
The only change would be if there were changes in the value of, of the properties.
Well, but the effective tax rate would lower the rate.
The effective tax rate on properties that were taxed in both years, and we would get the new construction. We would get revenue off the new construction. But if we maintain the effective tax rate year over year, we would roughly maintain the same amount of revenue, but keeping in mind that as our debt service obligations are met, we meet that first, so our M and O portion of the tax rate could be less, which would.
Right, right, right. So, I mean, just for clarification, though, I mean, because that can seem very ominous, right? That would, that would assume that, that we did not increase revenues to the city for the next five years, that we held them as is, that we kept adjusting the rate down and not assuming any, you know, growth rate adjustment, which inflation and population growth should spur an increase in, in government revenue because they need it. So just not to be terrified of the fact that we're going to exceed, it's not going to happen. Plus, we have a balanced budget requirement, so that's not going to happen either.
I was going to say that, that by city charter, we, we present a balanced budget each year.
The growth that the, that we, the city, generates from one year to the next is new construction. That's the part of the tax rate calculation that allows us to gain some additional revenue. The effective tax rate, if it's adopted, as Katina said, is looking at the same properties from one year to the next and generating about the same revenue on those properties.
Councilman Gusterson?
Oh, I'm sorry, Roger. But the statement up there is essentially true because the effective tax rate does not account for inflation. It doesn't account for increases in salaries, salary increases to employees. It doesn't account for any new employees that may need to be hired. It doesn't account for, you know, the, the cost of anything.
Doing business, right.
So essentially, if you continue year after year to maintain the effective tax rate, something's got to go. You lose some, some city services. Okay.
In your five-year plan on the, on the debt, as I recall, we have some debt that starts to come off the books pretty soon, right?
We will, in, in each year, without looking at it, without having it in front of me, I'm not sure what that amount would be each year, but as we pay our principal and interest payments annually, some portion of that debt comes off.
And I recall we, we had a, we had a pretty significant drop coming up in the next couple of years off of some bonds that finally got paid off. Is that, is that, oh, I don't even know the numbers. I just want to know, is that taken into account in the five-year plan?
Yes, it is. What we do, actually, when we start working on the development of the plan, we start with the debt service and the outstanding debt service, and we look at the principal and interest payments for each year throughout the life of, of our debt service. That is factored in.
And just one more thing. And it also is the assumption that we don't add any new facilities which require ONM either?
True.
Okay, I just, because when we add them, we need more money.
Other key planning assumptions, we have existing personnel, so in the multi-year financial plan, the base plan, there is no additional personnel, and it, we have factored in a 3% increase for salaries and related benefits in the plan. Our non-personnel related costs are factored in at about a 5% increase, trying to factor in some, some amount of growth for the regular cost of doing business. So we have that factored in, and it is based on our historical averages.
Councilmember Gusterson?
You have a good handle on what has driven that 5% increase year over year for non-personnel? I, I think the 3% number for existing personnel is probably fine and accurate. It's probably a real good number. The 5% increase year over year seems a little high, but then again, you know, the city's grown, and I'm just kind of curious if you guys have a handle on.
Again, without having. Again, without having the numbers directly in front of me, we do have, it would be anything related to maintenance and operation or maintenance costs for equipment, facilities, service contracts would be factored in for that as well.
New fall fields or new.
That's correct.
New roads.
Electricity.
Yeah, library, library, yeah, new fire station, okay, okay.
Our planning assumptions related to fund balance, in the multi-year financial plan, it is our target to maintain the city's financial policy of having 90 days of operating reserves, so the undesignated fund balance uses that are allowed in the city's financial policies are for emergency-type incidents, hurricane recovery would be an example of that, any one-time expenditures that do not have an operating cost associated with those, we've used fund balance in the past to purchase dump trucks for our public works department, that would be an example of that, and other major capital purchases, we've used fund balance for fire trucks and different things of that nature, and also startup expenditures, occasionally we've used fund balance for startup, startup expenditures for new programs, we don't have a whole lot of those, but we could use fund balance for that purpose. This is the slide that we have shown, I believe, each year when we do our multi-year financial plan, it shows the baseline revenues that are included in the plan as well as the baseline expenditures, as you can see, we are able to maintain the city's current service level through to year 2021 with the projections that are included in the plan, at that point, the expenditures would outpace the revenues, the footnote there points out that with the adoption of the half-cent sales tax, a portion of that being used for street improvements in the plan, we have removed the $500,000 that, that has been carried in the budget for street improvements, that is just in the plan, it's, if council chooses to do, otherwise, we can, we can accommodate.
Quarterback to the budget.
Before, before celebrating. Before celebrating this chart, I would just say, there's another chart following this that.
I see where we're at in 2017, it's awful close.
That's our balanced budget, we had, I believe, budgeted $1,904 to go to enter our fund balance, so we presented.
Councilman Foreman has a question.
Katina, what's the inflection point in 2021, is that build-out, or what's causing that?
No, actually, at 2020, it's just the projections of our expenditures in the five-year plan, so 2021, we believe at the current projections, our expenditures will outpace revenues in that year. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Rocky?
It's usually traditional for Councilman Scott at this point to point out that we cannot do what's at the end of that graph.
No, we cannot.
But thank you, John, for letting me do that this year. But you can go ahead and elaborate.
Well, I would just elaborate that this is the same chart that I've seen for six years, it's always going to cross at some point down the road, but I do have a question, the revenue goes up year on year.
The revenue does go up.
What's driving that if, if you're using the effective tax rate in the assumption of the budget?
We actually do have the other revenue sources, we have sales tax revenue that is projecting to, to increase, so there will be other, the other revenue sources will make up that growth.
Okay, okay, so that, that's outside of the effective tax rate?
Right.
So you're using personal property taxes for those?
Well, and actually, this, this slide with our revenues, it shows all of the general fund revenue sources, so it's not just property tax.
Okay, thanks.
And our next slide reflects the baseline revenues and expenditures, but it also includes a red line that shows the decision packages that the departments have included in the multi-year financial plan to maintain or maintain current service levels, the significant jump in 2022 includes a new fire station, I believe it is, or another fire station, and so that's, that significant jump, I think it's about 2.9 million that's included in the plan, and currently, we wouldn't have a funding source identified for that, so that leads to that significant increase there.
So that, that would obviously be a plot.
It, we'd have to identify a funding source for.
We're not writing a check for another new fire station, I wouldn't think.
All right, in summary, again, the plan indicates that our 90-day operating res, oh, yes, sir.
Going back to the discussion a few minutes ago on the $500,000 that's normally in the budget for streets.
Yes, sir.
Is that in that blue line expenditure or not?
In the blue line, well, actually, the blue line on this chart is the revenues, so we will, we would have, it wouldn't affect the blue line, the red line is the basic expenditures, and the $500,000 is not included.
It's not in there.
It's excluded, see in the small print, excluded funding of 500 in general.
Go to the next chart.
The funding for streets would come from the street improvement sales tax.
Right, right.
On this chart here, where the revenue, okay, never mind, I understand.
The base revenue on this chart is the same as, as the chart before, the only difference is the expenditures here include the decision packages that are included, well, that are proposed by the departments to maintain service levels, so the $500,000 is not included here in the red line.
So when I caution about the preliminary celebration, this is closer to reality, frankly, this includes new personnel that come along with additional growth, this includes replacing equipment that's required to be replaced, so this is more.
Replacing roads is real.
All right, in summary of the multi-year financial plan, as stated previously, the plan indicates that our 90-day reserve would be maintained through fiscal year 2021, at that point, we would start dipping into the, the city's 90-day reserve to maintain the current service levels, with the current projections for revenues and the assumptions in the plan, there are no decision packages funded in the five-year planning window, we would do that on a year-to-year basis when we develop the budget. And council's role, as we move through and developing the multi-year financial plan, it is dynamic, it changes each year, it changes throughout the year, we're always looking at the plan and seeing whether or not we, whether or not things played out the way that they did year over year, but we would need at this point council's guidance on the tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year or some direction as we move into the budget process, we would also need input on existing or alternative revenue sources, if council has any suggestions or would like for us to explore any alternative revenue sources, any programmatic changes that council would like to see with city depart, within the city departments or the services provided, and your active participation in our budget development is what we're seeking. Any other questions?
Do you have any alternative revenue streams to recommend?
Because any alter, any alternative revenue sources, we, over the years, have explored, our alarm permits was one that, that went into effect quite a few years ago now, so we've looked at that, we can factor those things into the plan, we also have the ability in the plan to look at fire EMS or EMS billing, but it's actually, it will be on council's direction, so.
But those are your two?
To do those.
Two that come to mind?
We actually looked at sales tax prior to the additional half-cent sales tax going into effect this year, that was fact, we had the ability to turn on the sales tax or turn it off in the plan, so that we could look at what the revenue projections might have been.
Is there any way when you bring us back the broken-down portion that we talked about earlier?
The exemptions, property tax exemptions.
Exemptions, how, how, how it works, could you bring us back your list of ideas for additional revenues?
Okay.
And see if we've got any that we can add to it.
Okay.
And I'm willing to participate in the budget any way you need me to, Katina.
Thank you so very much, you all always do, and we appreciate that.
Nice job, first time.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Rocky?
A month or two ago, when the, we had the discussion about staying in the electric consortium, forgotten the name now, but, and the guy came in and he made an impassioned speech for us to stay and told us that we would be seeing some decreases in electrical costs, have those been included in the budget, have we, have you decreased the electric costs?
We actually have not gotten into, into that, that portion of, or that far into the budget development, but we will be exploring those options and looking at what those savings will be, and we'll make sure.
So we will see a decrease in electricity costs?
We'll, we'll analyze it, see if we will actually, if that, if those estimates become a reality, or if, if we have an expectation that they'll become a reality, so.
Well, I certainly have an expectation, because that's what we agreed to when we, when we voted to stay in, we were told we were going to get that.
And we have, actually, I believe, without, without having the numbers directly in front of me, I can't tell you what it, what it has been year over year at this point, but as we move into the develop, into the development of the budget, we always look at electricity, because that would be a force at work up or down, if we, if we see that.
And similar to the effective tax rate, I'll use that analogy, we have a number of new buildings and facilities that are coming online, so the fact that the rate may be lower, we will be air conditioning and cooling and heating and more space, so the expense may go up overall, but if you look at the kilowatt hour or the per unit.
Yes, sir.
That makes me think of just a simple thing, when we add these restrooms at Lake Friendswood, are they going to have AC in them? Solar tube lighting, you know, we'll take advantage of, to keep things low-cost like we currently have it, okay, I just, I didn't know whether we had expectations or design criteria on that building that would increase our ONM and, and other buildings as well.
There's no AC at those restroom facilities, but we will have increased electricity cost, we will have increased electricity cost at the new fire station, which is sizably larger than the current one, we've expanded the library, which has more lighting, granted, we are putting in more efficient systems in these new buildings, they're still drawing more power than the previous ones.
We're all good? We're all good, thank you, Katina.
You're very welcome, thank you, thank you.
Absolutely. I actually asked a few questions. Patrick, capital project update? No slides, just?
Few slides, few slides. I don't know if it's three minutes, but it's probably not too long, all depends on the questions. Evening, Mayor, Mayor Pretlem, Council. I'll go ahead and jump right in it, so I don't waste all my three seconds.
It's three minutes.
Three minutes, three minutes, our fire stations, two fire stations, one at 1610 Whittaker Drive, the other one at 111 Woodlawn, next month, I anticipate an item on the agenda for the, for the final acceptance of both of these projects, both of these stations. The fire station, one Kenneth Camp Fire Station at 1610 Harold Whittaker Drive, a lot of good things, a lot of good things going on there, this is the front entrance, all of the concrete worker, work is done, the majority of the main items are complete, the one big item that we talked about last month was the connection and the, and the work with American Tower, I appreciate all of those who participated in getting, in helping us with that, as you can see, concrete and storm sewer system is already in place, there is some dirt work here, dirt work here, still easily done in a short period of time, fence all the way around is already all in place, this is the front, one of the big items that you don't see here is the striping and obviously the cleaning, and this big guy right here does go away, so get a nice, better view, all of the, all of the windows are in, all of the doors are all in.
Patrick says the front, if you looked at from the street, it's a side, but that's the front entrance to the, to the building.
Inside, this is one of the, this is the mini-conference room, this is the, the large training room, this is inside, this is your kitchen area with a, with a table for them to look at or to sit down, those are the main pictures I had, fire station four, actually don't have any new pictures because we are completely done on that portion of it. The next project, Centennial Park Basketball Pavilion, we only have one, I would anticipate getting this item on next month's agenda, we are down to one particular item with the contractor, it necessitates, it's the difference between getting a certificate of occupancy and not getting a certificate of occupancy, I do not plan to bring it before you until we have that certificate of occupancy, we are putting pressure on the, on the contractor, however, when it's fully functional and everybody is using it, liquidated damages is hard to assess when there's no damage that's actually achieved, however, even with that, we are putting on pressure because we're holding the contractor's money too, so that's his, that's his desire to get it out. Next project is a street bond project, Winding Road, on Winding Road, last month, we did a, a change order for a portion of Riverside Court, this is the portion of Riverside Court that is basically about 40% done on Riverside Court, at the end, this is the inlet that easily doubled in size and does help when the rain, when the rain goes down, portion of Winding Road and on Riverside Court, this is the portion leading up to the bridge, in the very near future, we're basically waiting for the rain to stop, we'll do a final inspection from the bridge all the way up to Melody, provided all that work, works good, we will actually remove the barricades for all of the cul-de-sacs except for Riverside Court, we'll have two-way access heading to and from Melody, the one obvious section, this portion right here will remain, mainly due to, let me go back one, this section right here, they will need to, contractor will need to finish this, this portion right here is actually within Winding Road.
Do you do the striping after you take down the coat, or do they stripe it with, and then you remove all?
They typically remove the, remove the barricades and then go ahead and stripe it.
Clean it and then stripe it?
Yes, sir.
I just don't want to drive over there when they're striping.
Right.
White paint on a black vehicle.
Doesn't necessarily work out well, yes, sir.
It was striped before.
If it was striped before, I, I don't recall, I'll find that out for, for next month. The next project that you have coming up later this evening is a change order on the street bond projects, which is Woodlawn Avenue, this is a shot from 2351 looking towards Shadow Bend, and we'll get more into it when the item actually comes before council, we're changing it a change, we're calling it a change order, however, there are many facets of it that are not a, not a change order, couple of the main things are, the scope for this portion was not in the original scope for the round one, it is the same scope that was in, or that is in, round three, it essentially gives us a jump on getting the project completed before school starts, couple of things that do also differentiate between a change order, typically in the, in our contract, if it's a change order, there is a 10% allotment that the contractor can charge up to for this portion, the contractor is not charging that mainly because of our negotiations and looking at it, it's not a change in scope, it's driven by items that are unforeseen, it's an opportunity for the city to get the work done earlier at a good price, it's a, it's an opportunity for the contractor to continue to do a good job.
Patrick?
That'll come up later this afternoon, or this evening, yes, sir.
One, one lane is blocked off and it looks like they're starting, I literally drove down it about an hour before I came here.
Yes, sir, to, at last, at last month's meeting, as we kind of did the head nod, as you can tell, as you drove down it, you noticed. as you can tell, as you drove down it, you noticed that there was no pavement that was actually broken up. The only thing they've done is they have the traffic control in place, um, just to give them that much more opportunity to move forward. It's, it's not trying to guess what council is going to be doing. It's, it's just trying to be efficient with time. Old City Park, um, previously, we talked about Old City Park and about plans with, with the dog park. So what this is, this is a, a rendering from our design engineer that kinda, that shows a couple of different things within the park. The dog park itself is located in this portion right here.
Where's it at? How many parking spaces we got there, Patrick?
Not off the top of my head. Probably between, probably around fifty in this area right here. In this area right here, probably around twenty, twenty, twenty-five. This is the area for the dog park itself. Above it, this is your walkway that goes all the way around it. This is the walkway that connects to the main parking lot and also to the existing trail. You where I go out there today, that's where the existing sidewalk terminates. Just for orientation purposes, this is how the orig, the other one goes. Your bridge is right here. You come over the bridge and then you start, you start to the right going towards Stevenson Park.
Does, does that trail loop now? I mean, will it loop when it gets to the dog park or is that gonna be a dead end?
Talking about this, this area right here?
You're gonna be able to come across the bridge, go all the way up, go through Old City Park and go to the dog park.
Dog park and then loop.
Dead end there or is it looped?
It would loop, it would loop around, it would loop around the dog park.
And then you can return and go back over the bridge and go home?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Exactly.
Your tool's gonna have the whole sheet red at one point. It won't be as exciting anymore.
Patrick, are y'all moving the road over? This gray street that goes the parking lot?
Uh, yes, sir. It, it, it ends up, what we're trying to do is get off of the property line, which is located right here. We do need to allow for two-way traffic because this road does not go through. Um, and then you also have the parking spaces on the, on the top portion of it. Just for references points, and to make Councilman Scott enjoy the red, what I just drew is the existing, um, horse arena. Kept the arena. An option, if council didn't want to do that, we would narrow this road to one-way only. And we would connect it somewhere in there, connect it in with this drive right here. We try and listen to council, so just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
It is all red now.
So I should sign it, right?
Yeah, your signature's coming up tonight, isn't it?
Design criteria, yes, sir. Um, lift station twenty-three, crazy horse. We are still working with the, uh, with the design firm. We're pretty much down to one particular item and one particular item only, and that is the integrity of the existing lift station. We're looking into firms that actually do that type of work. What it would, what it would entail is doing, uh, basically blocking off the flow to the lift station for a period of time, getting down in there and then actually, basically, there's a couple of different methods to do it. The old school method is to drill a hole into it, see how much is there, look at the drawings. Hey, this is supposed to be eight inches of concrete and we're only measuring three inches or five inches. So the degradation is the delta. Also, when they, when they go down there and they, and they drain it, how much rebar do you actually see? Provided everything looks good from that perspective, we would then move forward with design, keeping the wet well in place and not having to do the force main. Couple of the issues that we've been, um, occurring lately, uh, when there are excessive flows, we have had some sanitary sewer overflows. We're looking at different methods on, um, reducing those at one particular location. So we're continuing to work with both T C Q and the resident on that. Just this past weekend, we had some electrical problems where one of the legs actually blew out. So we had to replace a leg on a portion of the electrical panel. We also lost the seventy-seven horsepower pump that's in there, so that's actually in the shop. So we're needing to continue to move just so that we can reduce the expenditures on basically a dying lift station.
Does the generator kick on when that happens?
Uh, actually, for that particular lift station, the generator does not run the seven, the large, the large horsepower pumps. It only runs the smaller ones and there is no automatic transfer switch, so. Somebody has to go and press the button to make it work. But usually, when the power goes out, it's usually in adverse conditions. In adverse conditions, the small pumps can't keep up. Yes, sir.
Please. Why are the controls set up that way? Why, why doesn't the generator run the large pumps? Or is it just not large enough to do it or?
At the time when we were looking for generators,
Yeah.
That was the generator on the old police station.
Okay.
When the new police station was built, they moved that to, to, uh, lift station twenty-three. So when the grant came out there allowing us to purchase generators at lift stations, because that had a lift, that had a generator there, that was not eligible for the grant.
Alright, so you were, it was sort of no good deed goes unpunished.
No good deed goes unpunished. You are correct.
So, we probably oughta fix that.
Yes, sir. Part of the design is to have a fully functioning generator for that station.
For the large pumps?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome.
Patrick?
Yes, sir.
When that thing is rebuilt, will it handle any future capacity that may go there?
Yes, sir. That, that is the desire. You look at, you look at the existing open, open areas that we have and we need to account for those being developed.
With answer Councilman Gustafson's question is, it was built for the need at the time. And actually, long before West Ranch, so it's, it's. Well, it's just overcapacity now. Why we're only putting a backup generator on the small pumps instead of the large one?
So next item is our, is our text dot items, and after that, we'll have our city items, Councilman Rocky. So our, our textile items, we currently have seven. The first one is probably the one I got the most traction on. Our FM five twenty-eight and Whittaker Drive signal is ninety-five percent designed. They received those drawings earlier last month. They're looking at a, a let date in the November, December timeframe. There are, there are nine other signals that are located within that package that they're doing. So the exact time for when the signal will go live is kinda anyone's guess, but sometime in twenty eighteen is a reasonable, reasonable guess. The other two items within that, that person's purview had to do with FM five eighteen and Dunbar Estates Drive. We talked about a potential for a signal for that. They are still trying to get the, 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 uh, study data from it. They had anticipated eight to twelve weeks. This is at the very beginning of week eight. They do not have the data in yet. I anticipate when I'm before you on July tenth, I do have a, a better answer for that. The third one within that purview is the FM five eighteen in Shadwell Lane. We also indicated that they would have a better answer by July on, on that one as well. The final three items, FM five eighteen and Winding Way. And the, uh, that had to do with the, the striping for a right turn lane. If you're coming from five twenty-eight up to five eighteen, having that, that's more striping. And also, um, increasing the, the lane depths for five eighteen and twenty-three fifty-one and five eighteen and, and five twenty-eight are all items within the district engineer's purview that there is not money allocated for those things at this time. Their budget does come up, uh, later and, you know, we have expressed a desire to have at least some of those issues addressed. The final, the seventh item has to do with, if you're riding from twenty-three fifty-one to five twenty-eight on five eighteen, you'll notice a couple, a couple, uh, drops along the road. We have talked with them. Currently, there is not budget for, um, adding asphalt or, uh, addressing those. However, as I talked to the, the maintenance engineer, he indicated that he did find some funds that are not gonna be expended and he's trying to, uh, do a budget transfer to adjust, to adjust some of those items.
That looks, I, I brought that up and it looks, it feels, I mean, like a failure.
Yes, sir. Now, we have gone in.
Be more prioritized.
Right. And we have gone in and we've actually done field inspections inside the, the, uh, the drainage pipes that go through there, and the drainage pipes don't have any, any cracks or any, any breaks.
Back to number five.
Yes, sir. Five was FM five eighteen and twenty-three fifty-one?
Five eighteen and five twenty-eight.
Okay.
We, yeah, we need to move that up as a, a higher priority.
Okay.
I don't know how you do that, but if I can be of any assistance with text out, I would gladly help out.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Gustafson?
Do you have a rough idea what the, if you were to total up all these things that we need, uh, on this list you just rattled off for text out, what the cost would be to do that? And if you don't, that's okay, cuz I didn't, I don't think you really came prepared to discuss that. Or at least in the future, give us a number.
I'd probably say one point five million.
A million and a half bucks to do all this stuff?
Or, or, yeah, somewhere in that, in that ballpark.
I don't know why it seems low, but, okay.
It really depends on what the, what the true nature of the issue is on five eighteen. That's really the variable. Typically, signals are between, you know, um, for what they're having to do at Whittaker, you're probably looking at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the infrastructure is already in there. For the, uh, signal at Dunbar Estates, that would be more. You're probably looking at about four hundred to four, five hundred thousand dollars for that signal because there is no infrastructure already there. Your Winding Way, your striping is, is kinda minimal. There's not much cost in there.
Yeah.
Shadwell Lane is the same thing. I would say probably both of them for fifty thousand. You could do both of them. The last two, the, uh, the turn lane at twenty-three fifty-one and at, uh, five twenty-eight are probably your last two things that are probably at most two hundred thousand dollars each. And I'm guessing, and I'm overinflating that as all engineers do.
I was saying, they just got their budget approved here in the last few weeks for the new biennium. But, um, it'd be nice to know when they set their budget for the next legislative session and find. My experience has been with things like this. A squeaky wheel gets agrees. If they're complaining about it, they'll get it on there to get us to go away.
And I would say between me and Marid, we're definitely squeaking.
Okay, okay. We'd all be happy to, I think, so let us know what we can do to help. Okay.
Councilman Rocky?
Yeah, two things. One is, um, the surface repaving on twenty-three fifty-one. That looks really nice. I drive it every day. It's, so pass back on to them. They did a nice job on that.
Definitely do, sir.
And, um, in the future, would you, would you list these items on the, uh?
I can, I can do that.
There so that for us, those of us that are closing in on that, uh, on that tax, tax lock on our house can remember these at our age. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I can definitely do that. The next item is city, city items, and that I did actually have a bullet point for that, so I can do the same thing for the text dot items. The Mandel Bridge, at last month's meeting, we talked about exploring additional options, both text dot and Gulf Coast Water Authority. Gulf Coast Water Authority is one who owns the canal that goes with that. They are actually open to partnering in, in a particular project for that. They own the canal and back in nineteen eighty-five, they did participate with the city on a rebuilding of that same bridge. Um, they would be open to that if, if we would like to pursue that. The downside to that would be their delay time and actually getting it done. They have to schedule it just like anybody else does, and they're about a year out on doing a bridge such as this. So I can bring it.
Is it just bridges particular or roads too? Because if that be the case, we'd better start talking about five eighteen and five twenty-eight now. Do you see what I'm asking?
Yes, sir.
Takes them a year to get something on the drawing table. We better get it drawn.
Well, with, with five twenty-eight for that particular canal structure, that would be a, a text dot and they would obviously dictate a lot on that, on that particular, um, portion until we get above fifty thousand. Once we get above fifty thousand, then.
It's all us, but I understand. That, that's why I wanted to, I wanted, I want us to be waving our hand and squeaking now. I mean, we're behind the eight ball now, so.
Yes, sir.
The bridge, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just bridges that they address, that it takes a year.
No, it's mainly, it's mainly bridges.
Mainly bridges. Okay, so roads, we could expedite quicker than that.
Well, for.
Point now, I wasn't talking, uh, what I was trying to find out is, it takes a year to get them to talk to us about a bridge or to get any traction.
Okay.
Does it take a year to get traction talking to us about a road when we have a problem?
With Gulf Coast Water Authority or with text? With text dot. Offhand, I'm not sure how long it takes. But that, that goes back to the.
I'll talk to you more about that.
Okay.
Because I wanna expedite that.
Okay. That's the only city item that I had on there. Yes, sir.
Can we get a little direction with regard to the Mandel Bridge? Gulf Coast is willing to partner with us, but they would only like to rebuild another wooden bridge. It wouldn't be an improved paved roadway much like we have in other parts of the community. It wouldn't be a culvert. It would be a wooden bridge rebuilt similar to the one that's existing today.
How long did it last?
Since eighty-five, so, uh, we got a good thirty years out of it.
Thirty-two years.
Can you, how many people are serviced by this bridge again?
Two hundred vehicles a day.
Two hundred vehicles a day, and the cost to build the bridge was?
The bridge we would like to put in place would be half a million or three quarters of a million.
Right.
Gulf Coast is willing to fund is about two hundred and fifty thousand.
Will they, they'll put up two fifty?
They'll put up two fif, they'll put up eighty percent of two fifty.
But this isn't, this isn't the only access for where, where anybody's going.
Correct.
There, there's still dual access into both sides of this bridge.
Correct, and we have, we, sorry.
No, no, I, I'm just. It's a nice to have. Is it, it, I don't know if it's a gotta have.
We, we have received, and it's not an overwhelming response, we've received two emails and I've gotten stopped once in the last two weeks by residents really grateful that the bridge is closed, simply because their street has now become a little quieter. They're able to jog down the street without fear of cars coming behind them.
And the other one?
The same, but the, the other one was the same thing. That being the case, this is not a, a scientific study by any stretch of imagination.
But I'm, I mean, why did the ridge get, why was the bridge there initially? Because I mean, five twenty-eight is just not a quarter mile away or if that. I don't know how long those streets are, but they're not very long.
Just historically to provide additional access points back there. This was put in.
And was it the, was, was that the route of an old main highway through there at some point? And, and five twenty-eight was rerouted to where it is and, and, and that's how the bridge originated or?
I don't believe so. I believe it was just for some homes and stuff that was back, that they were back there that didn't tie into more.
Back before those roads went out from that road to, to five twenty-eight. So, some years ago, there was a reason to have it.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. But, but I guess what I'm suggesting is maybe the best option may be just to tear down the bridge and do nothing.
Gulf Coast would be happy with that, too.
Mo, what would it, what would, what would a total cost on a wooden bridge be?
About two fifty to three hundred thousand.
Each or?
No.
Total.
And they'll do eighty percent of it.
Well, we, that, it's a no-brainer. Get the bridge fixed.
Yeah, and they're gonna contribute eighty percent.
Two people don't want it out, there's, there's evidently a hundred and ninety-eight that do. And it's convenient for the school bus. It's just a, it's just a convenience. It's been there. I know it's been there since the forties, so.
Yes, sir.
My question is, uh, evacuation, you know, getting out of those areas. Sometimes they gather a little bit of water.
they gather a little bit of water. This might be another way to get out of that area as well.
Correct. We'll bring a, a formal agreement to you.
Okay.
Uh, so that, it took us a while and just happenstance to come across that agreement. This was a lot of verbal discussions back in the 80s.
So, it's good that they'll pay 80% of it.
Yes.
Nice work. Nice work.
Patrick and his guy.
Good job. Good job, Patrick.
Um, before we go into the design criteria manual, um, I wanted to mention Lake Friendswood. Um, we talked about different facilities coming online and James reminded me, because I obviously didn't put my pictures in there, but the contract has been awarded for tandem construction to do the restroom and the pavilion. Um, we did meet out there and looking at exactly where the pavilion is going and where the restroom is going and how the trail is going to be impacted, they are, we're gonna need to close that portion so the trail is not going to be a full loop going around. Their construction area, they'll end up putting construction fencing from the existing fence basically to the water.
Temporarily or permanent?
Temporarily. Temporarily. Just while they're under construction. Construction time is, is 75 calendar days. Um, but I know council had also asked about trying to keep that wide, trying to keep it open. It's just what it, what it ends up doing is pushing people right up against the water and that's not something we want to do with the signs that we have out there regarding the wildlife. We don't want to push people closer to the wildlife.
Well, we're not supposed to feed anything out there.
Exactly.
Okay.
Um, design criteria man, manual, uh, provided council approves this today, the effective date would be July 1st. Um, at last month's meeting, there were three main questions that came up regarding that. The first one regarded the manhole lining. So, what we, what we came up with as a good solution is non-single-family residential homes that have a forced main would then need to line it. So, if there's a single-family residential, they would not typically if it's a non-single, that's some sort of commercial or, um, more industrial use.
Does that suffice the requirement that we're-
That's, that suffices for what, for what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Can I ask a point of order?
Go ahead.
Why, why are we talking about this now? It's not on our agenda.
It's part of the, uh-
It's just part of the capital project update.
It is.
It is a resolution later. Um, second item was the Galveston County grease trap requirements. I believe Councilman Enoch said, had asked that question, how we differ or does it, does it meet with them? Um, Galveston County currently, they go by exactly what TCEQ says. TCEQ goes by which the MEP deems as required for a grease trap. Um, so what we're recommending is above what the Galveston County and TCEQ is, is enforcing. And the third question, the third item up there was, um, Mr. Mayor, you had had some questions about Appendix C. Were you able to get, you were able to get those done? Okay. Those, those are all I have for, for that, for the design criteria manual. And Councilman Rocky, if you have additional questions when we get to that particular item?
I'm still trying to find it on the, on the work session agenda.
Understood. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Chief? Police Department radio purchases? Thanks to Patrick, he's only got two minutes. Yeah.
Chief, the yellow card means you have one minute left.
Well, I get that. I've been out here listening to Patrick.
The red card means, yeah, that's why you only have one minute.
I get it. I get that. I get that. And the good, good part of this is I'm not looking for any decisions. Okay, uh, really what I wanted to, to do, I get the, okay. So, let's go back two years ago. It's Steve, Councilman Rocky, if you'll remember, you chaired kind of a subgroup during that, during that council workshop and we talked about the end of life for our radio system. So, our current radio system was provided to us with grant money from Harris County. And so, the good news is that that shelf life on that radio system was 10 years and that was relatively new technology at the time. And so, a big part of what is going on in the radio world is the end of life that Motorola likes to factor into these projects. The good news is that Motorola will have a competitor this time and that'll be Harris Radio. And so, Harris Radio provides a lot of military quality radios and so they'll, they'll have a competitor when we move forward. So, we estimated at the time that the total cost of replacing our consoles would be 1.7, consoles and radio equipment would be 1.7 million. And the guidance that we run ahead and received at the time was to begin working on incrementally replacing the radio system so that we weren't staring down a $1.7 million sticker price. Did I get that right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I think we're, I think we're almost done. Okay, end of life, I'm not going to go ahead and go through all of this other than to say we're done with the radio system that we have. We can't really even do any type of flash upgrades to it now. That's pretty much over our ability to do that. And, uh, we actually were able to do some flash upgrades in December. So, the software that's inside of the radios can't, uh, be updated any longer and then of course, we're at the end of the hardware life, meaning the maintenance of it, uh, in December of 2018.
Chief, how old is this radio system? As far as it date back?
Uh, well, actual technology probably dates back to 03.
Our ownership or-
We went operational on it in 06.
Okay. So, it's an 11-year-old radio system?
Right. Right. Should've got 20 years out of it instead of 11. So, here's really the update that I wanted to bring to you. So, the consoles and the consolets are done. So, we got, uh, grant money in the amount of 155,000 to help offset the city's, uh, the city share into that project, um, just a little bit under 174,000. And then we did the recording, uh, the recording system courtesy of the dope dealers that have provided assets to us through, uh, asset forfeiture. Uh, we've also used the, um, vehicle replacement fund to go ahead and purchase vehicle radios, updated vehicle radios. So, again, we've been able to chip away at it and then, uh, through the regular budget process, and again, you'll see the police investigative fund mentioned off to the peripheral. So, slowly but surely, uh, we've been able to chip away at the, at the PD's radio requirements to the tune of just a little bit over 450,000. Okay, the volunteer fire department, if you remember two years ago, um, you went ahead and approved their radio purchase for the fire department. We thought it was best to prioritize, uh, the fire department first, uh, simply because of their mutual aid requirements. So, that slide is pretty self-explanatory. Um, and then you're going to see reference to UAZI in there. That's the Urban Area Security Initiative and they have been the source of the grant funds that have been received. Uh, that program has changed somewhat so that it did include a wider range of projects. However, everything that they want presented and anything that they're willing to consider all has to have a nexus to terrorism and the mitigation of, uh, you know, terrorist-related matters. So, really what they're looking for is, you know, first responder projects. Um, we have two projects for this year. One is for radios, so, uh, there's probably about $130,000 worth of, uh, mobile radio requirements that are out there for the PD. Uh, we're still under consideration for a 50% grant, so I would recommend if we are fortunate enough to get that grant, we could, uh, you know, defray about 50% of those mobile radio costs. Um, and so you'll see that the total PD and volunteer fire department, uh, uh, that we've purchased up till this date is just a little bit under 900,000. And so, here's the future purposes. Uh, I just mentioned the UAZI grant, so we've got, uh, that that's out there still pending and we may get half of that. But as we run into this upcoming fiscal year, we're still going to probably have, um, about 600,000, maybe a little bit more, uh, that, uh, we're going to have outstanding costs on. And we're going to have to probably move on those before the end of fiscal year 18, which would be by September 30th of next year.
So, it'll be a decision package?
It'll be a, uh, it'll be a decision package. What we're waiting for Harris County to do, because Harris County's in the same boat as we are. So, they're going out for an RFP, Request for Proposal, and they're going to have a competitor. And, uh, I think we'll know what the right time is, so we don't even know what the dollar value is going to be because somebody's going to have to be hungry, uh, in that. It's either going to be Motorola or it's going to be Harris. And my recommendation would be to at least get some consensus here that when, uh, Harris County goes out for their RFP and they go out for their purchase, that we try to leverage the best price that we can off of whatever Motorola or Harris is, uh, you know, willing to give them in the way of best pricing. I think that's going to be the best opportunity.
Have we tested both products and we know?
Yes, and it's, that's a good question, sir. The way that, uh, all the protocols are written post 9/11 is that they all have to meet standards of encryption. So, everything as far as compatibility, whether or not they can function on the radio system and whether or not this radio can talk, which is a Motorola, can talk to a Harris radio. Yep. And our beloved Navy and Marine Corps are using those Harris radios, so, uh, there's got to be something worthwhile there.
Is there any value of our, the equipment we have?
Uh, only the, the antiquated one?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're, we're turning those in. So, we're getting a few hundred dollars.
Oh, we get credit from whoever, Harris will take them or Motorola?
Correct.
Okay. And the grant money, back a couple pages, was on the mobile, portable devices?
Uh, no, the, uh-
Mobile devices?
Is the mobile devices. So, the mobiles are the radios that go inside of the vehicles.
So, and that's 125,000 estimated cost?
That's 125. We're hoping to knock that down in half.
75?
I would say probably going to be about 60 or 65,000.
Okay.
Now, we will have a chance to go ahead and purchase radios again, uh, the 1st of October out of the vehicle replacement fund. That'll be a half a dozen radios, so, you know, that would, uh, you know, knock the number down from 35 replacement radios to, you know, just a little bit under 30. I think we've made good progress at chipping away at that 1.7 million. The cost won't come out to 1.7 million and when we know what the number is, we'll bring it back in the way of a decision package, uh, so that you have visibility on what it is.
Thank you very much, Chief. Along.
Just in time. Okay. About to red flag.
Perfect.
You carry a gun, you get more leeway.
Is there anything we can move up?
How about this consent agenda?
Yep. Well, 16 is... Yeah, we can do that, right? Can we, can we move 16 up, Roger? And your city manager's report too?
For starters, are you waiting on any family or anything to? We're good, okay.
Very consider, I'm sorry, I wasn't. I missed that on that. We're happy. I just want you to know that. All right, so we're going to move up. Do I have permission to suspend the agenda room?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Number 16, discussion and possible action regarding concurrence with the city manager's appointment of the Director of Administrative Services. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Since, since you've done that, can I go ahead and announce who that is for the-
For the rest of the audience.
And I just wanted to say a couple of things about the process. Katina, as you know, has been our Deputy Director of Administrative Services for a number of years. She came to us, uh, from the public education side. That was her public finance start. Uh, has been with us about 10 years now, I guess, and has done a, a fine job, but we didn't just hand it off to her. She and I have visited and I don't know that she said she wanted to compete, but that's what we ended up with, that it was going to be a competitive situation. We, uh, did advertise, brought in some folks. We created a panel inside of, of senior staff, interviewed, interviewed several of those folks and Katina was hands down the, uh, the recommended person. So, I just wanted to give her her due that, uh, she has earned this, uh, and we're looking forward to working with her and appreciative that she's in, in the, in the chair and that you've already been concurred with. So, congratulations, Katina.
That was our favorite thing to vote on today.
City managers report?
Uh, I have a couple of things just to help publicize some of it. It's almost that time of year. Our favorite time in Friendswood is the 4th of July and, uh, it's coming around for the 122nd Annual Friendswood 4th July Celebration. This year, it's, uh, the theme is Salute to America, Texan Style. So, how much better can you get than that? Again, they will kick off, uh, at 10:00 AM with a grand parade and, uh, y'all, y'all just start praying now that we'll have good weather because I really don't want to have that parade consisting of the mayor and myself and Marad walking down the street. But we will have a parade. If, if it's pouring down rain, you will be in the parade with Marad and I, so.
Oh, walking?
Walking. Or riding bicycles, whatever you tell us we're going to do, but we'll have that, that annual parade.
It's going to be a short parade if I'm walking.
If it's, uh, if it's pouring down rain, but barring that, we'll have our annual, there's generally about 100 entries that are in that parade and it's always fun to see you folks.
Sweating.
Looking good and sweating and waving. Listening.
Listening.
Uh, obviously, the, the parade ends at Stevenson Park. We have activities there that go throughout the day and end about 3:30 that afternoon for a brief rest for, for some, uh, not for our Parks and Recreation folks and volunteers, but they'll be preparing for the evening program that will be held at Centennial Park beginning at 7:30. And this year's band is Bee Gees Gold, so, don't, don't say anything, but that is awesome is what I heard coming and staying alive.
Staying alive?
They are a Bee Gees tribute band and they'll headline the night's entertainment. They will guarantee to be a lot of fun or your money back. Uh, fireworks at 9:20 that night and it always is a fantastic day. Again, public parking's not available at Centennial Park, but we will have the shuttles operating, uh, from Friendswood United Methodist Church and from Friendswood High School. And those will begin running at 6:30 in the evening.
Clearbrook. Clearbrook. James Tony said Clearbrook.
I'm glad you said it because what I had and so, what I, my report was incorrect. Clearbrook High School and United Methodist Church. Okay. James is going to have to review this before next year. The two high schools, Clearbrook and Friendswood High School, have the shuttles running. Thank you, James. Uh, wanted to announce that we are proud to recognize Mitchell Jeffcoat as a recipient of the 50 Club of Galveston County's Officer of the Year Award for outstanding law enforcement efforts during 2016, 2017. He and his wife Lauren have a six-year-old daughter and a two-year-old son and yet he still finds time to do all kinds of other stuff that I'm not going to read, but he teaches and mentors at Alvin Community College. The guy trains and runs and Ironman races. Is that accurate? Just, so, I think what you hear is don't, don't mess with them maybe. Uh, Mitchell has a bachelor's degree from Sam Houston State. He holds a Master Peace Officer certification. He's a nine-year veteran of law enforcement, having joined Friendswood Police Department in 2007. So we are just proud of, of him and congratulate him. Bob, if you would pass on those congratulations again for us. Good job. Officers and people like Officer Jeffcoat are the reason we continue to be recognized for being one of the safest cities. And speaking of that, we have just learned that Safewise Report has released its 50 safest cities in Texas for 2017. Friendswood is one of two in the Houston area that are in the top 25 of that 50 list. We are number 11. The only other city was the Memorial Villages. So, great job by a lot of our folks, and I would include you, you folks as well. You know, we've gone through that multi-year financial plan. We all love budget time of year. Everybody gets excited and loves to go through the process. But every year, there are more demands, more than, than we have resources for. But somehow, the council has been very helpful in prioritizing those and making sure that, that our people have the equipment, that we have the right number of people, and that they're compensated competitively, so that we can keep those people here. So I thank you all for, for that as well. Bob, pass again our thanks to all your folks. Also related to public safety, I wanted to share that the EMS division of the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department has received the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Plus Award. They get the award for the longest award as well, for implementing quality improvement measures for the treatment of patients who experience heart attacks. So we, we thank them and applaud the FFFD and EMS Division for achieving this award. Basically, it shows that they meet and follow the appropriate guidelines in treating people who have severe heart attacks. So it's not a beauty race, a beauty competition. It's real life stuff, so thank them, we thank them for their work. Finally, it's graduation time of year, and each year, Waste Connections, as a part of their commitment to, to community involvement within the city of Friendswood, has provided $2,000 in scholarships. $500 to both of the CCIST high schools, serving the Harris County portion of Friendswood, and $1,000 to Friendswood High School. Each school scholarship committee selects those recipients. And this year's scholarship recipients are Kennedy Bateman from Friendswood High School, Austin Twan Nam Long from Clear Springs High School, and Hannah Mishke from Clearbrook High School. So we appreciate the partnership we've had with Waste Connections and their continued support in assisting these high school students in pursuing their college education. With that, I'm finished, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Roger. I'd like to move down to the item 20, Consent Agenda. Second? Got a motion, a second, and he just...
I'd like to recuse myself from item D.
Okay. You are so recused. Any other discussion?
Boy, I don't want to get a vote on them one at a time, so...
No, we're, yeah. He's, he's recused.
I won't vote on any of them.
He's not voting on any of them. He's not voting. Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? We're going to go back to item six. Close the executive session in the executive conference room adjacent to council chambers. Communication from the public regarding executive session topics. Is there any communication from the public? Okay. B, council may convene into the executive session in accordance... It's written how I want to say it. In accordance with Texas Government Code pursuant to Section 551.071, consultation with the attorney regarding pending claims of Olson and Olson LLP, and Section 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding potential litigation arising from pending zoning change application with Verizon Wireless. We're convened. Okay, we're going to reconvene into open session. Communication from the public. Well, if you, y'all will bear with me for probably two minutes. I'll take care of item number eight and dispose of it. Discussion and possible action regarding a settlement offer relating to pending claims against Olson and Olson LLP. Do I, do I hear motion? I'm just asking. Okay, I'm going to dispose of number eight then, because there's no action. Number nine. Communication from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Tracy Din, and then David Allen, step to the microphone and introduce yourself. John Scott, you want to go over the time? You have three minutes.
It's me, I have one minute left. Try it on the chief at this point.
Hello, I'd like to greet the council and all the residents and everyone else here from the city of Friendswood. I'm here to represent Timberfield Estates. I'm the current HOA president. And I am here about the proposed rezoning of the property on Whispering Pines, the current church. We are here because we're concerned about the rezoning from a residential property to commercial. It would increase safety concerns and risk for that intersection, or that area, as well as causing an increased flow and traffic. And the reason why I say we are concerned about safety there is because the current pedestrian crossing, it's a little hard for our kids and the current people that use that, that intersection. There is very limited line of sight on Arbor as well as Verdun currently, and we feel that if there's businesses that are brought in, it would increase the, the safety factor for pedestrians using that area. And then another concern is that stop right there on Whispering Pines and Arbor is also the bus stop for the high school as well as the junior high. And if there is businesses brought in there, I don't believe it's going to be safe, because currently, we've noticed that sometimes traffic does not stop, even though the bus is flashing. The last thing, we don't feel that there's going to be an additional benefit for converting that property to commercial. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Patrick always used to say the Declaration of Independence, I'll say a few lines from it, for the Fourth of July, and that was pretty dependable here. I don't know if the next meeting is before the Fourth of July. But what makes our, our government different, as Lincoln said, the government of, by, and for the people, let's keep it from perishing from the face of the earth, is that, as Thomas Jefferson wrote, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men," meaning men and women, of course, "all men are created equal and are endowed by their Creator," not the government, "by their Creator, with certain inalienable rights, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And the governments are instituted among men to secure these rights, and that the governments are run by the consent of the governed. That's what Lincoln was talking about, of, by, and for the people, not the corporations, not the deep state. So let's think this Fourth of July, that we have a very special form of government here, we need to keep it. Things, London Bridge, the young girls killed at the concert in England, stuff's kind of out of control. We're importing huge numbers of unvetted people. Just, just go on YouTube and search UPS plane delivers refugees. They do it at night, and weirdly marked planes, and 30 buses show up, and 600 people jump out of these, you know, 747s and DC-10s, have brown paper packages tied up with string painted on the outside. And we have no idea what we're importing. Catholic Church, there's about 10 groups, but for example, between 2008 and 2016, the Catholic Church itself, just from the federal government, let alone from the Rockefeller Fund, Carnegie, Ford Foundation, other anti-American type groups, received $2.2 billion to bring in refugees. And we don't need that many more people. We're not real long on jobs. So it's, it's, it's clouded and piven. Just look up "cloward," it's like coward with an L in it, to bankrupt the country and to cause dissension. We have to somehow get, get ahold of what's going on. In the meantime, pray for the country, thank you. This Fourth of July, we have an absolutely amazing form of government compared to others on this earth. It's absolutely amazing. Nothing's perfect, no government's perfect, but we have so much to be thankful for, and an amazing tradition to pass on to our children. Thank you.
Mary Ann Dunne-Cass... And Jack Click.
Mary Ann Duncanson.
Duncanson.
Yes, sir. Again, I would like you to please not vote for the rezoning of the property on Whispering Pines. We live on Arbor Lane, which is directly across from this. I don't know how you would feel about having an unrestricted piece of property being sold at the end of your neighborhood. We don't know at this point if this would be a tattoo parlor, if it would be another oil change place. As Tracy said, this is going to be a safety issue, but it's also an issue between the property values and our property values. We all vote, and we all hope that you vote against this, at least until there can be some restrictions that will restrict the type of business that could be on there. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Jack Click. I also live on Arbor Lane. Excuse me. I'll ask that you vote against the rezoning of the property also. I moved there about two and a half years ago. It was a really sleepy little neighborhood with a couple lanes of a road. Now I've got a superhighway outside my neighborhood, and now we're looking at bringing in, changing the residential property over to commercial. I don't see there's any value for the Friendswood to do that, because it's a church. And if it's truly going to remain a church, then, then it doesn't need to be commercially zoned, you're not getting taxes on it anyway. If, if, if it's, if you're doing it for this, for the seller of that property, then, then why not wait till we actually have a buyer, and they can come back and ask for rezoning at that point? It just doesn't make sense. We have a very difficult time getting on the road. The traffic has backed up past Arbor Lane, and many times, we have to drive the loop and come back off of Verdun, just to get on the road there. So, you know, adding commercial, we don't know what type of, especially unrestricted commercial, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us. Our, our home values should probably be going down. That's not the case, because it, it's very, you know, we went into a sleepy little neighborhood. It's not sleepy anymore. It's, I pulled out for church yesterday and almost got whacked by a big SUV. So, I'm just saying, if there's no value to the city of Friendswood, why would you do it? Thank you.
Andrew Duncanson and Philip Radisaw.
Good evening, council and citizens. Thank you for listening to us tonight. I'm also here to talk about the rezoning of the church at 104 Whispering Pines, which is in what is described as Block 11 of the Friendswood subdivision. And that's, and that's exactly what this was when we moved here 27 years ago, a subdivision, on a quiet residential street, a small neighborhood. And now it's no longer a quiet street, and from the way it looks, it's not even going to be a neighborhood anymore. We didn't, we didn't move into a commercial district. We moved into a neighborhood in a community of people. My wife volunteers on Sundays, takes people to the hospital in the ambulance. We're part of a community. We're not just here for a few days. We've raised our children here 27 years. So I would ask you to vote against this. And as Jack said, rezoning, tax exempt. What, what possible good could that do to the city? The only thing it can possibly do is benefit the seller at our detriment. And there's 22 homes in that neighborhood, not counting the people that live on the street also. So I'd, I'd ask you to consider voting no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, ladies and gentlemen. In support of these residents here, there, there's no real need for the city to rezone this property at this time, because it won't change the, the tax benefits, we won't get any money for it. We can wait till there is a buyer for it, it's under contract, and then at that point, the purchaser can come before the city, and we will find out then what kind of business he wants to put there, find out if it's something that we would like, that would be amenable to the residents there, instead of it being wide open as it is if we rezone it. So I ask that you vote no for it, and then somebody wanting to purchase it can come before the city. And at that point, we can find out, out of the 184 different choices it could be, what kind of business they might want to put there. And then you can make a decision on whether that's something we want or not. Thank you.
Item 10, Communication with Committees and Special Reports. A, Annual Report from Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman Craig Lovell. We'll follow that with Annual Report from Fourth of July Steering Committee Vice Chair Barbara Blanchard.
Good evening, Mayor Holland and council. This evening, I'll present a summary of the last year's actions for P&amp;Z, and what our plans are to address the ongoing ordinance and planning activities this year. And I'll also discuss the Commissioner/ applicant review process that is currently underway. The first item is a short summary of last year's actions. The statistics I have focused on are throughput. They are data-rich and information-poor. But what we accomplished, we had four preliminary plat reviews with three extensions, 14 final plats, one extension, 10 commercial site plans, five amendments, 11 zone changes with three withdrawn. We also had two vacate right-away easement recommendations. These should have all been in your backup with the details that followed with those. In 2016, we also dedicated significant efforts towards addressing ordinance changes for large retail and permitted use changes for the downtown district. As you know, the large retail changes were completed earlier this year. As I reviewed the aforementioned statistics, I couldn't help but question the value of this data to the commission or to the council. There's nothing here that's actionable. I'd like to partner with the council on setting goals with metrics that could lead to actions to improve our processes and demonstrate transparency. And here are some examples to consider. Metrics on Commissioner/ applicant selection. Metrics on Commissioner meeting participation. Metrics on recusal use. Metrics on Commissioner retention. Metrics on on-time work completion. And metrics in participation in the city's planning process. These types of metrics could be used in several ways. One might use it to reweight our interview scoring. Another way might be to understand the impact of the commissioner's day job on their volunteer activity. And metrics could be used to demonstrate that our, to our citizens, that our conflict of interest mitigation is a concern. The council's role in setting goals could be as simple as establishing the desired performance levels, like annual meeting participation rate, say, of 90-plus percent as an operating expectation. Taking it a step further, the actionable part of this is deciding when to cut a commissioner loose over attendance. Focusing on this goal would also provide zoning applicants, our customers, a fairer review when they have a full commission. The next two discussion items deal with ordinances and planning activities. We've established two permanent standing subcommittees on P&amp;Z. The Vice Chair, Rhonda Neal, leads the ordinance subcommittee, and Commissioner Brett The Vice Chair Rhonda Neal leads the ordinance subcommittee, and Commissioner Brett Banfield leads the planning subcommittee. Let me begin with the ordinance subcommittee. Their first priority is to come up with recommendations on dealing with ordinance changes for residential front fences. That work is in progress. But more importantly, Commissioner Neal has established a protocol for reviewing ordinances and proposing change. It follows a similar methodology to that that we use to make the large retail changes. First, we establish the compelling reason for change. Then we can establish a criteria that's easily understood for the staff and that they can manage. We determine whether or not it aligns and reinforces our community values. We also look to see if there are compliance issues associated with it. We do that by looking at ZBOA rates and non-conformance rates. We determine whether or not it's supported by data, and we also determine whether the voice of the community is warranted. And they also look at other indicators. The ordinance committee's future work will be throttled by staff or council to meet the city's priorities. Simultaneous to the ordinance effort, Commissioner Banfield is well underway in addressing planning actions, starting with the future land use map, which is one of the oldest items on our to-do list, right, Mayor? And also included on that is the zoning map and the major thoroughfare map. The subcommittee is working the following 10-step approach for the future land use map. They have updated the map to reflect the current zoning. The subcommittee has reviewed the working draft and made several suggestions, and city staff has revised that draft based on these suggestions. Their next step, and this is where we are in the process right now, is to bring the draft forward for a full P&amp;Z review, and then we'll bring it to council, and we'll take it to the intercity committees like the CEDC and KFB, et cetera. Then we'll bring the draft back to P&amp;Z, tune it up, bring it to a town hall meeting, then we'll do a work session with the city council, do a JPH, and then we'll have, hopefully we'll get to the point where we'll do two readings on it. The last item that I want to address with you this evening is improving the process by which we make recommendations to you on Commissioner appointments. We had a process in place. It wasn't transparent, and it didn't give the council, nor the applicants, or our residents, adequate insight into how we do business. We're currently implementing a new process that will address openness and the perceived inequities in our processes. We are currently interviewing applicants as we speak. We had four interviews today. We had three last Friday. We've got four on Wednesday. We had over 70 applications in the pool. However, half of these applications were recorded on or before 2014. So here's a thumbnail of what we've done to this point. Applicants prior to 2014 will be notified that if they still wish to remain in the pool, they must reapply and provide an email address. All applications are assigned a number. Jim, did you have a question? Okay. Applications will be maintained per the city's record retention policy. As positions on the commission open up, all applicants in the pool will be notified and asked to confirm their desire to remain in the pool. City staff will use an online random number generator to select a minimum of 10 candidates for interview. We did that with Steve Rocky and city staff the other day. Two P&amp;Z members will conduct the applicant interviews with city staff present. Council liaison is always welcome. Interviews will be conducted using a standardized questionnaire that is weighted and scored. Records will be maintained. The P&amp;Z chair and interview team will rank the applicants based upon the interview and provide council liaison with a detailed summary containing the top three acceptable applicants for council approval. If three acceptable applicants are not found in the first batch of 10, five more candidates will be pulled from the random number generator. Applicants will only be interviewed once in a 36-month period. We have a draft of this and an operating procedure, and after we go through this first cycle of interviews, we'll go back and review that draft. We'll go back and review the interview forms and the waiting and update it and perfect it. This concludes my report. Are there any questions?
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
I'm aware of the process that was used prior to this, and the previous chairman kept all the information. Where do we plan to store this information?
We intend to, it comes to city record, okay? And I don't know exactly where staff plans to store it, but it will be on an Excel spreadsheet, and we will maintain the interview forms as well.
What I'm trying to do is make sure that we have the information rather than it not being in the possession of the person.
Oh, no, no, no. This is not my, this belongs to the city. This is not my information. This is the city's information, and it becomes part of the public record process. And is retained in accordance with the city's retention policy.
Excellent. Councilman Hill?
Greg, I did not know that applicants, the applications were thrown away after three years, which explains why a lot of people I know said they had never been called for interviews.
Councilman Hill, they've never been thrown away. We had a stack of them that went all the way back to 2010. Our proposal is, is that we maintain them in accordance with the city's retention policy. But if somebody hasn't been picked or interviewed, and they're still out there, then at the end of that three years, we would ask them, are you still interested? If you're not, we'll drop you. And that's what we did, by the way, with those that are 2013 all the way back to 2010. Those folks were all notified of what we were doing and asked to reapply if they were still interested.
Okay, I appreciate that. And one thing, we sit up here and we vote for your commissioners. The only information we have is their volunteer form and your recommendations. I'm uncomfortable with that. I wish that when an applicant is here to be put on P&amp;Z, he was standing up here at that meeting, and we'd be allowed to ask him simple questions. I don't know if that's good or not, but...
You know, once we serve them up to council, that's your process, but, you know, what we will do is we will provide you a detailed report on who we interviewed. That's all the applicants, and why we are recommending the first three for your consideration, okay?
That's good.
And that way, you should have more information.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You'll have the backup. We'll have a lottery system in place. And the candidates are put up by the interviewing process, but they're recommended to council by the mayor. And at that time, whoever makes it through that, and I read the information, make the decision that I'd like to recommend them, then that's when council would be able to ask the questions.
Right.
So that would be the process.
Right.
Okay? Any other questions? We're good? Craig, thank you very much.
And one final thing. I'd really like to thank city staff in 2016. I think we did have a big year. The number, just reading the numbers, it doesn't sound like much, but it's a lot of work, and they put a big effort in in 2016.
Thank you, Greg. Barbara Blanchard. And after that, we'll do Brian Gibson with the West Management District Board.
Good evening, mayor and council members. It is my pleasure to represent the 4th of July Steering Committee. On Tuesday, July 4th, the committee and the city of Friendswood will proudly put on the 122nd Annual 4th of July Celebration. This year's theme is "Salute to America, Texan-Style." The day begins at 10:00 a.m. with the grand parade. It features more than 100 entries from Friendswood and around the state. Trish Hanks, the superintendent of Friendswood ISD, will be this year's parade grand marshal for her years of service to the community and the school district. After the parade in Stevenson Park, there will be rides, games, food, and live entertainment, and more than 50 booths until 3:30 p.m. The evening parade, oh, sorry, after the, Lord, I'm losing it. The evening program at Centennial Park begins at 7:30. Starting at 6:30, there will be free shuttle services to the park from Friendswood High School and Clearbrook High School. Bee Gees Gold, a tribute band, will headline the evening's entertainment. Yep, they're going to be good. They will be followed by a fantastic fireworks extravaganza, choreographed patriotic music. For more information, sign up to be in the parade or have a booth in Stevenson Park. Please call Parks and Recreation at 281-996-3220. We would like to thank this year's 2017 committee members. Our Chair, Tommy McDonald. Anthony, Christine, Michelle, and Stacy Scarpa. Corey Kirkland, Daryl Fails, Rafino Ramirez, Terry Corbett, Judy DeLaHondro, Kathy Molinaro, and Renee Rives, and myself, Barbara Blanchard, Vice Chair. The Friendswood Chamber of Commerce Liaison, Lucy Walts. City Council Liaison, John Scott. From the Parks and Recreation Department, our Director, James Tony, and all his staff, Michael Boyett, Kimberly Ramirez, Heather Woody, Katie Blanchard, and Gary Williams. Thank you so much, and I hope to see y'all come out and enjoy all day long.
Thank you very, very much. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Brian Gibson, President of the West Ranch Management District. That's going to be hard to follow. I don't have slides and pictures that are as good as that. So please beware. Please give me hard, don't give me too much of a hard time. Okay, first part of the presentation, first of all, I appreciate y'all, you know, inviting us to come speak on behalf of the management district. First part of the presentation is a little bit of information that came from the developer. First map on your left, or on this left, I'll try to point to this one, is just the city of Friendswood boundary with the West Ranch Management District boundary kind of incorporated in, and then a little blow-up image, aerial image. I'm pretty sure that most of y'all are familiar with the project, but just thought that would be good. This is the current land plan for West Ranch. Currently, they're approximately 80% built out with residential construction. Only remaining sections to be developed are in this area around these lakes, as well as, well, these sections are constructed, but home building is continuing around here. And then the last sections in West Ranch will be built probably in the next year or two. There's two sections that are under construction here, and then there's one remaining section that has not yet been designed and approved. More information from Friendswood Development Company, just kind of back up what I say in earlier. Home building's underway in seven of the 24 sections. Again, two sections currently under construction with one left. Residential home construction is expected to be complete sometime in 2019. I do not know what the original projection was, but that's the current. I also apologize, but I provided you all a backup to the slide presentation as well as an official letter. There is one error in here on the total number of homes. This is accurate from what I understand, the 1,267 homes. A little bit about the management district and their tax rate history. I'll talk a little bit about value as well. The original tax rate established for the West Ranch Management District was a total tax rate of 65 cents. In 2016, the board, based on the recommendations of the advisors, decreased the tax rate to a total tax rate of 55 cents. It's projected, although I've got a little footnote down here, the financial advisor has not made their official recommendation, but he is projecting that the tax rate will decrease again in 2017 to around 50 cents per $100 valuation. And then sometime in 2000, or projected in 2018, we start to level off around 45 cents, really until commercial value is, you know, is on the ground. Commercial, we'll get to that in a little bit, but commercial's really going a little bit slow. The developer still doesn't have an anticipated date for construction of the commercial projects. A little bit more on value. It's my understanding that in 2005, when the district started, the projections for value for the district were going to be around, when it was totally built out, including residential and commercial, will be approximately $320 million in value. The most recent value in 2016 was $394 million. And I have it right here somewhere. The certified value for 2017, or I'm sorry, the projected 2000 assessed valuation for 2017 is $470 million. That does not include commercial value. So when the project is complete with commercial included, projected to have over $500 million in value. Talk a little about completed projects. As you know, the management district has funded multiple projects. Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, West Boulevard from 518 all the way down to the southern boundary of the district. East Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, which is from West Boulevard to the east of the project, you know, several detention ponds, the FM 518 traffic signal was completed several years ago. And then the Friendswood Park parking lot was recently completed. And I believe somebody, I'm not sure, a gentleman had mentioned that the construction permit for the pavilion, I'll just talk about it a little bit here in a second, was, I guess, approved by the city last week, so they have a construction permit, and that's getting ready to start. Here it is. This is one other thing that's mentioned. The 1.1 acre site has been deeded to the city of Friendswood. That is inaccurate. It has not been deeded to the city as of yet, and in this letter that I provided, it discusses that. It's my understanding that we're going to wait until the pavilion's done and everything's complete, then deed over the site. So it's going to start this week, which I understand that's accurate. And then I anticipate construction's completion of October 2017. I think that's a little bit longer than his projected date of 72-day, or calendar days. That's just what I've been told by the consultants. It's just a real quick, that's the best rendering that developer was able to provide with me. Not a whole lot, but as you know, it's located in this area, the Friendswood Lake, and then that's the pavilion and the restrooms. Future projects, Friendswood Lakes Boulevard west of West Boulevard is going to be under construction soon. It's a four-lane boulevard. The funds for that project are currently in the district's escrow account. The funds were escrowed because of, they needed the right-of-way street dedication plat complete and right-of-way dedicated, and the commission had escrowed it because of that. It's my understanding the plat is now recorded, and that will be provided to the commission for a release of surplus funds. Once it's released, the construction project will start, but it is also, the district has also executed the actual contract, so they're just sitting and waiting for the TCEQ to allow us to start. Anticipated construction is in September 2017. So once that project is complete, Friendswood Lakes Boulevard from the western boundary to the eastern boundary of the district will be complete.
Do you have any estimate of how long that'll take to build?
Mayor, I, three or four months, something like that. I mean, it's not a, I believe the total construction cost of that project's around 700, 800,000. Don't quote me on that. I don't remember the exact facts, but it shouldn't be very long. We've been trying to start that construction project for some time. The district bid the project, awarded it. I signed contracts, the district approved them. We're sitting there trying to get the commission to approve. The, I believe it's the WS&amp;D portion of the funds have not been, or have not been released by the commission, but the paving dollars have. So we're just trying to get it all complete. This is just a blow-up of that segment that's waiting to start construction. So again, once it's complete, the entire length of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard within the district boundaries will be complete. Commercial property, I know this has been a question, and again, this comes straight from the developer. There's about 45 acres commercial up at the front of 518 and West Boulevard. Just really haven't gotten the right, right commercial developers to be attracted to that property. I believe they're just waiting for more households, more rooftops. The same thing with the 13-acre commercial property, which is in the southern portion of the district. Just waiting on commercial property or developers coming. However, the utilities for all those tracts are in place. However, the utilities for all those tracks are in place, water, sanitary, storm sewer, detention are provided and ready to be served.
Capacity's fine, right?
And, again, Friendswood's just, has indicated that it's still looking, or seeking potential town center developer as well.
Can I ask a question? Maybe you know the answer, maybe you know. How do they, how are they going about it? Because, to my knowledge, there have been none, and it's probably taken, what, how many years to build this? There's twelve hundred people out there that'll spend their money. How can we help?
You know, I'm not here representing the developer, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I am involved in the company, obviously, but this is not one of my projects, I'm not on the commercial end, I do hear discussions about it, they just haven't found the right commercial buyers, there has been some, some talks of going out and meeting with potential brokers, I'd have to get some better information, possibly meet with you, come back.
I look forward to it.
Sounds good, I just don't have that information. And then, long-term goals, I think this is very important for the Management District, obviously, the bonds of the district need to be paid off, I believe the first bonds that started were in November of two thousand ten, those are thirty-year bonds, and so every bond issued that's been issued since that point, they all have a maturity date of two thousand and forty. So, as soon as bonds are all paid off, obviously, the district, you know, won't need the capacity to sell more bonds. Also, you know, with the value that's gonna be created, commercial, we look forward to trying to decrease the tax as much as we can, and that's obviously the goal, getting to almost just a maintenance tax associated with the district. A little bit about maintenance, and this is kinda where we go with long-term goals of the district, having the, you know, ability to keep the district in place, if that's what's needed, to have maintenance items associated with the detention ponds or anything like that. Currently, the Friendswood, City of Friendswood maintains water, sanitary, and storm sewers, the Community Association maintains all the landscape reserves, and the Management District maintains all the detention ponds, and part of that maintenance tax that was established in two thousand sixteen of nine cents per hundred dollar valuation goes towards the maintenance of those facilities. So, I know I went through that pretty quick, I tend to talk pretty fast, but if you have any questions.
Objection here. Councilman Gusterson.
I've got a series of questions, if that would be okay.
You have the floor, sir.
All right. So, at this point, the proposed sunset on this, well, is there, usually when these things are written up in the legislature, there's a, there's a sunset date tied to them, do you happen to know what that might be?
I think my, the only answer I have to that is based on the maturity of the bonds.
I don't think that that's the case, you know, normally when it's written in, there's, they have to write in some sort of a sunset, I believe, and it may be twenty, it may be twenty-five, and they may have, it may be that it was done thirty or thirty-five years.
I'm not aware, but I can give you that answer.
Okay, all right. I understand why the district was created, and I think it's a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. The tax rate, um, the tax rate for that district right now, for those residents, is actually higher than the city's tax rate, and it's, it's, it's something that I do get some, it's heartburn over. I understand what the district does, I think maybe a lot of people maybe don't understand what the district is when they move in, but find out when the tax bill shows up. Now, only nine cents of that, which it was sixty-five, now it's down to fifty-five.
Fifty-five cents.
Okay, which is great, that's a move in the right direction, but only nine cents of that is maintenance and operation, the rest of that is debt service, correct?
Currently, yes, the two thousand sixteen tax rate, the total tax rate of fifty-five cents, the debt portion of that is forty-six, so currently, the maintenance and MNO is zero now, point nine.
So, is that rate reduction from, is that a result of higher valuations, and you're able to roll back the rate to kinda maintain essentially an effective tax rate, or is it that new homes have been built, and so there's, now there's more valuation and more pay, people paying into it, or, I guess clearly, it's not from any bond payoffs at this point.
There have been, some bonds have been paid off at this point, I don't have those exact numbers, but yes, the, since two thousand ten, the tax rate for, the MNO tax rate has decreased from seventeen cents to nine cents. And yes, that is an indication of the extra value that has been added, as well as being able to pay off bonds and sell bonds a lot quicker, I believe, than really.
And I'm sure that the proposed, or, it looks like, future reductions, I'm sure would be very local news to the folks in West Ranch. One more thing I really, I wanna, or two things, I guess I wanna kinda hit on with you guys, with you, and it's, it's not, and the intent's not to be critical, it's to offer up a couple suggestions. There's no website for this district that I'm aware of, and there's no newsletter or anything like that that's sent out, so people, I'm grateful that you came here tonight to talk to us, this is very informative, and we're actually the oversight for the spending of the district, so I'm glad you came in to talk to us about it, but I think the people that live in West Ranch would love to get something once a quarter, or a website, or something where they can just kinda see, and it puts a little sunshine on what's going on. And then the other thing is, and I understand your meetings, your board meetings are open to the public, but they're, they're on a one Wednesday during the month, like eleven o'clock in the morning, up in Greenway Plaza. Is there any way that, I don't know, once a quarter, a couple of times a year, you guys might be able to hold one of the meetings, maybe here at City Hall, or at some location in Friendswood, or in the district, where people could come, maybe in the evening, to attend?
That can be something the Board can discuss. Currently, the reason, I mean, it's just a simple answer to why the Board meetings are set, consultants that come to those meetings charge pretty high rates, and being convenient to the city is just, makes it a lot easier for those consultants to be there, so, you know, whether that's the right reason that people accept, that is the fact, but no, that's something the Board can consider.
Okay, all right, I just suggest it might be a, it might be well-received by the residents in West Ranch. And then I had a question about the retail development, but it looks like you're gonna look into that and come back to us, and, I guess, is it possible for us to have this kind of a visit from you once a quarter or so?
I don't know that you need it once a quarter, but I'd be happy to come back, I mean, there's not a whole lot of things happening, but definitely, I mean, I'll come back when you like, I know the past couple meetings.
Largest development in our city right now, I guess the busiest, busiest home development, so, and we've kinda, we've got an oversight requirement.
Let's try and do it in six months, I'd like to, I'll be, I'll be talking to you, but I'd like you to be able to tell the public our progress, because it looks like it's gonna be exponentially reduced as we finish, because of the values.
I agree.
Okay.
Sounds good. I apologize for not being here the last couple months, had some personal things, as well as other meetings come up, so.
I understand.
Anybody else? Thank you, Brian.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Y'all took it easy on me.
We can fix that.
I know.
Item fourteen, discussion and possible action regarding accepting a proposal from Infrastructure Management Services for engineering services for development of a pavement management master plan?
I think you passed thirteen.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve? I did.
I did twelve. Oh, yeah, there were reappointments, you're part of thirteen.
You are correct, gentlemen and ladies. Item twelve, discussion, discussion and possible action regarding approving appointments, reappointments to the following Board of Committees. A, Fourth of July Steering Committee, B, Keep Friendswood Beautiful, C, Zoning Board of Adjustments, do I hear motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding reappointments to West Ranch Management District.
I make the motion.
Do I have a second? Discussion, saying none, all those in favor? Now, back to where I was. Discussion and possible action regarding accepting a proposal from Infrastructure Management Services for Engineering Services for Development of a Pavement Management Master Plan, and authorize the Mayor to execute the contract. Do I hear motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the second.
Talk to us.
This is a direct response to the engineer on my left and the engineer on my right's request sometime ago, am I correct?
Okay.
Am I correct? You guys wanted the pavement management study, you and Carl? Well, I was giving you credit. Specifically, the, for sure, I'll give the credit to Carl, but I thought Steve chimed in on that, but anyway, okay.
So, this is a combination of a DP that was approved last year for basically half of it, and this is to take the other remaining funds to go ahead and get the complete, complete study done, to look at all of our streets, and to get all of the data, so that we can better utilize the funds that we're getting from the, from the sales tax portions. Essentially, what this is, is a company comes in, they have infrared technology, they drive over all the streets, they come up with an analysis for it, they work with city staff to determine what's the priorities of that particular city, i.e., you know, the routes to schools, the routes to emergency facilities, and kinda go along those, on those avenues to determine what the curves are, and then from the curves, they rank the various, various streets, as to which ones need to be repaired soonest, and also, they also create a total dollar value for, you know, if you fixed all the streets today, what that costs, so it gives council a good idea as to how much and to what magnitude fixing the streets would be for the city.
And this is an update on the list that we already have of streets that we know are forty years old that we need to replace, correct?
The, the, the original, original one was done in two thousand eight by Clonton Miller, that was more of some qualified engineers walking the streets and then doing, this is more of a more technol, technological, you know, way of researching and then, you know, listing the streets.
So, we first did it with the Friendswood Limo, anytime it bumped, we marked it, then we had Clonton and Miller, and now we're gonna take a third study to confirm everything that we have on our list. Am I correct?
Semi, semi, the studies that were done years ago were more visual in nature to identify cracks in the roadways or other potholes that may exist. As you know, the condition of roadways change over time, some deteriorate a lot faster than others, due to either water in the soils, due to drought issues, due to traffic levels, due to the, the size of the vehicles that traverse the roadways, due to a variety of factors. The baseline for our roadways is greatly outdated, the last study was done in two thousand eight, so the roads have changed considerably since that time period. This is a tool that'll help us prioritize the use of the sales tax dollars, plus establish what we need to be spending on an annual basis to just maintain the streets at or better than the current conditions.
Councilman Gusterson.
And then ideally, you would repeat the study on a five-year basis or something like this, and this would be your baseline.
Correct.
And point out that a lot of the roads that were identified during the earlier studies were, you're saying you're doing, a lot of the analysis is being done the same way as the, what the Bond Group did back in two thousand thirteen, I guess it was?
Correct.
When they did theirs and selected it. So, this is kinda doing the same thing, it's just instead of doing a visual inspection, there's, I guess, you said, there's thermography or infrared?
Infrared, infrared technology.
Okay, but then, but there's a set bit of criteria that, that they're using, so there's no, there's no human bias to this, it's...
Correct, and there's less, very little chance of error, in the sense that we may miss a visual crack or inspection, a crack doing a visual inspection, whereas this piece of equipment won't miss anything.
Okay, and so, this, you know, you get this inspection done, how long does it take them to process it?
The drive-throughs.
Drive-through is probably, they're done in less than three weeks.
Right, but then they gotta go back and compile the data.
Processing is probably about two to three months. So, within, within three to four months, ninety to a hundred and twenty days, they've...
You'll have a list of roads with prioritized as to which ones
Exactly.
need attention first. Okay.
Councilman Gusterson.
Along those lines, that would help with the prioritization and the justification for the prioritization of how you're approaching the roads that you're gonna repair, correct? This would help you when you are trying to defend the prioritization of which roads you're going to address first, this would help defend that?
Yes, ma'am, this would, this would go a long way towards that.
And a second question is, if I understood the backup information, half the money for this project has already been set aside in last year's budget?
Through the DPs, yes, ma'am, half of it's already been done.
Thank you.
They're, they're gonna drive every street in this city, is that correct?
Every street that we maintain, yes, sir.
This infrared is, does it look below the surface of the pavement, or why is it better than walking it by foot?
Because you can't necessarily always see everything, or you may miss, you may miss a crack.
But I'm saying it can see below the surface, or how?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. And, when you determine which roads you wanna fix first, do you do it based on the condition of the road, or are you talking about emergency vehicles? Because I know, I know streets that emergency vehicles never go down, for instance, East Viejo Drive.
Vehicular traffic does, does come, is a component of the whole matrix.
That that road is fifty years old and in dire need to repair, but you won't fix it just because there's not enough traffic or something, I don't think I agree with It's a bunch of million-dollar houses down there.
Yes, sir.
But anyway, I want you to consider the, I would repair the worst roads first, the condition, rather than who drives on them, or whatever.
Or the amount, the...
You're talking, you do it like my health plan, I think if I ignore a problem, I'll get better, the roads don't. What I liked about what Councilman Hill said was that you'll repair the worst roads. Reason I like that is because we're not replacing them, because they failed, so the quicker we take care of the repairs, the more we're gonna get out of the roads.
Right.
Rather than have them fail and then have to take them out, so, keeps our, keeps the cost to the taxpayers lower.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Good? All right, thank you, Patrick. We've got, we've got a motion and a second, we've had discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed? So it's to be unanimous. Fifteen, discussion and possible action regarding accepting a change order with the Eldorado Paving Company, Inc., for the reconstruction of Woodlawn Avenue, do I hear motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, Patrick, you wanna tell us about it?
So, I mentioned a little bit about this during the capital project update, but in essence, what this is, is we hired a consultant back in December to go ahead and design the plans. Once the, once the plans were, were designed, we showed them to our current contractor, and the current contractor did it, just like he would any other project. The things that we looked at were, A, was it, although it's not within complete budget of what the bond monies have for it, it's a reasonable cost, it allows us to complete the project much faster than going out for bids over a, you know, thirty-day process for that, analyzing the bids, and then coming before you, and then making a recommendation based on that, so it does speed up that process. Is there a possibility we could save some funds that way? There is a possibility of that, however, there's not a guarantee that the bids wouldn't come in higher. The bid that was presented by the contractor is less than what the engineer's estimate is for the project. The other thing that this, that this project, or this portion comes into play as far as the funding mechanism, there are bond funds that were, that were from the two thousand ten bond fund, that were found or recreated by Ms. Edge before she left, and those are funds that do need to be spent, so we were able, were able to use these, and the remaining money can go towards the Blackhawk Project, as that's under design now, with bids most likely in November, December of this year.
I think you did a fine job of... I think you did a fine job of explaining it.
One thing I didn't mention, on typical change orders, there is a ten percent allotted within the contract that is purely within the purview of the contractor, but because this isn't a missed scope item, there is no ten percent in there.
But it's within the parameters of the ten percent, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Rocky?
Yeah, help me on the numbers here on this attachment. The four hundred and fifty-three, four hundred and fifty-three thousand-
Yes, sir.
Add just for Woodlawn, right?
Yes, sir.
And the total project cost for Woodlawn now is?
It's four fifty-three, six eighty-two, plus the eighty-one, seven-ten, is roughly five-thirty.
Eighty-one, seven-ten's the additional.
The eighty-one, seven-ten was what, was used for the design.
So a half a million for that road? A little bit more.
That's what we're looking at.
Not a very long road. I mean, it hit a nine iron from one end to the other, but amazing.
It's roughly eight thousand square yards.
Yes. And it'll be done before school starts?
It'll be pretty close. I mean, it, it all depends on rain. That does, that does have a factor in it, but it should be done before school.
I like the way you sound now. Yeah, because it'll be an extreme inconvenience. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Resolutions. Resolution twenty-seventeen fourteen. We already did twenty-seventeen fourteen. Yep, we're, we're on seventeen A. Resolution approving the adopting update amendments to the design criteria for City of Friendswood, Texas. Do I hear a motion? Got a motion and a second. You want to ask some questions? Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Rocky?
I just think it's a very impressive piece of work. And it looked like a lot of work and good job.
Thank you, Councilman. Besides myself, I have great staff. CDD, Aubrey is here, she helped work on it as well, so a lot of people put a lot of hard work into it.
I didn't vote, I didn't want to discuss it last month because I hadn't looked in, I have looked at it, and I would concur with Councilmember Rocky. Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous. Resolution twenty-seventeen seventeen, a resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas, approving the amendment to the resolution designated individuals of the city as authorized representatives, Texas local government investment pool, and repealing all other resolutions inconsistent or in conflict herewith. Do I hear a motion? Do I have a second? Second. Discussion? Councilmember Rocky?
Can you just spread people in the audience out there, playing this one?
The city participates in three investment pools, text pool being one of them. Cindy Edge, our Director of Administrative Services, was one of the two authorized representatives. Cindy, as you know, is retired. Katina Hampton was appointed, in council concurrence tonight, to become the Director of Administrative Services, of which investments are a portion of that responsibility. So this is merely replacing, removing Cindy from that position and placing Katina Hampton in it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous. Ordinances, consideration and possible action regarding the following ordinance, twenty-seventeen eleven, second and final reading of an ordinance approving a vacation of a public right-of-way. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm good too. All those in favor? All those opposed? Ordinance twenty-seventeen twelve, second and final reading of an ordinance changing the prior zoning classification of attractive land consisting of four point six-two acres from business park and single-family residential to planned unit development property known as the pond. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? A motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be six-one. Ordinance twenty-seventeen fourteen, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification for a tract or parcel containing one point eight-four-seven-five acres located at one oh four Whispering Pines Avenue, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from SFR to downtown district. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Mo, would you refresh us on that? Do you mind? Or Aubrey? Okay, sorry.
This is a zone change request, a change from single-family residential to the downtown district. It is in the boundary of the downtown district boundary that was adopted in oh seven, oh eight. At this time, there is no current, you know, proposed development on it. It is a straight zone change. The uses that would be allowed in that district are in the permitted use table. We did make a couple of changes to that last year, or in 2016, to require SUPs for gas stations and rental and leasing services. So other than that, they'll be-
What's currently there?
The Reach Church.
Are they planning to sell?
It's my understanding that they are at some point. I don't know what their status is at this point.
So as far as we know, that property's not for sale at this time, or?
The pastor said they wanted to keep their options open, is what he conveyed to staff.
Councilmember Rocky, then Councilmember Gustafson?
Yeah, I have a question. You say it's, it's already in the downtown district?
It's in the boundary of the downtown district to be able to opt into the downtown district zoning.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. When we passed, or the citizens passed, the tax thing for the downtown district, and when we, when we went that, put that out for a vote, we, we showed maps of what the downtown district was. Was this property included in that or not?
Yes, it is in the boundary.
All right, and now it is currently zoned residential, but has a, an exemption for a church, correct?
SUP.
SUP?
Yeah.
For a church, correct?
Yes.
And, and as you said, it's not currently for sale. Is that correct?
I'm not, I'm not sure of the status at this point. Like I said, the pastor told us he wanted to keep their options open for future, you know, if they wanted to sell it, that they would have that option.
Is the pastor here?
He's not here. He's been here for the last several meetings, but he's not here tonight.
I wanted to ask him a couple of questions. Councilmember Gustafson? And who's next? I'm, I'm not necessarily against the zoning change, but I understand what your concerns are, okay? I suspect if the right type of commercial development were to go in there, you might not have a problem with it. But I will start off with what's there right now is not too horribly attractive either, all right? I think we'd all agree to that. But on, you know, we had a situation here a couple of years ago where some folks came in, and they didn't, they claimed to not have anything in mind for a particular piece of property, but they wanted it rezoned anyway. I believe they told us they were going to put in a Walgreens or a CVS. And nine, ten months later, Walmart's trying to come in there, so. I think your argument that maybe we hold off on making the change until we know what they want to do is probably a good one, and, and a fair one. That said, it might be a real good idea for you guys to go visit with the pastor at the church, share your concerns. But don't dig your heels in so hard. I mean, be flexible with the guy, and try to understand what he's trying to do. And, 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 and that's the way where you're going to get some input into what happens there. Not right now. I just, I, I don't want this to turn into another one of these zoning flare-ups. You know, the man owns the property. I mean, one solution to the problem is you guys could pull your money and go buy the, go buy the place from him, okay? He's got a right. He doesn't have a right to do anything he wants to with his property, but he's certainly got a right, you know. He's a property owner too. So, you know, I might suggest that we look at tabling this for a month or so, and, and try to give the pastor some, give the mayor some time to talk to the pastor, give you folks some time to talk to him, and. I guess, yeah. I'll make a motion to table it, and that's why. Second. Any discussion on tabling? Seeing none?
So a no vote is not to table it?
I second his motion to table it. No vote is not to table. Any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling? All those opposed? Five to two, it's tabled. First and, ordinance twenty-seventeen seventeen, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment nine to the original budget. Do I hear a motion? Make the motion. Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? E, ordinance twenty-seventeen eighteen, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment ten to the original general budget of the city for fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen. Do I hear a motion? Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Hill?
One comment. These two amendments contain about two hundred thousand dollars of unbudgeted money that we're going to spend this meeting. I'd like to remind the council when they say we don't need a reserve, we need a reserve.
Any other discussion? Did he take the words out of your mouth? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Communication from mayor and council. I would like to ask Councilmember Branson, since it's her first meeting, and congratulate her on being here, to have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very happy to be here. It's nice to be coming to the end of my very first council meeting. I already told Katrina I was excited that my first vote was for her, so congrats to you. That's wonderful. I also wanted to just mention, I thought we had a really terrific Memorial Day service. I wanted to thank James Tony. I think he did a grand job of moving us from outdoors to indoors, and it was really a great celebration, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Rocky?
Well, I'd also like to welcome our new attorney and to her first meeting as well, and that's all I have.
Councilman Hill?
Looking forward to seeing everybody on the Fourth of July.
Councilmember Gustafson? I guess we're not meeting again until after the Fourth of July, so I hope, yeah, so I hope to see everybody out at the Fourth of July Parade and the evening program at Centennial Park. And if you live here in Friendswood and, and you've never been to it, it's, it's quite an event, and I would encourage you to come out and breathe the heat and bugs and anything else, and enjoy the day. It's quite a time. Councilmember Scott, welcome. Congratulations to you too.
Congratulations, Katina. Thank you for your service to the city. Glad that you're here.
Katina, we're happy you're here. Mary Kay, we're happy you're here. And Sally, and John, we're happy you're here. Memorial Day was, my father was career military, so it was always powerful to me. I look forward to seeing you all on the Fourth of July, and I hope it's slightly cloudy and cool. But other than that, I have nothing, and thank you, James, for the Memorial Day, taking care of getting it out of the rain and in here so we stayed dry. We're adjourned.